Good evening, one and all. I call this meeting open at 7:15 PM. Prayer or mandate, if you wish? The people that are present in this room have different ways of expressing themselves, different ways of channeling their emotions and taking their decisions. May we combine? May we be impartial depending to stronger personalities? And may we sacrifice self-interest for the good of the whole? Please shed light on our decisions and our deliberations, and help us to accomplish our work for the greater well-being for those that we represent. May your name be glorified through our efforts. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Grimaud. Appreciate it. Thank you. Let's go on to the adoption of the agenda. I move that the agenda be adopted as presented. Seconded by? Yes, seconded? Seconded? Yes, changes or modifications? Yes. I would like to move item 9.3 from the regular meeting for further deliberation to the Committee of the Whole meeting with regard to the Lacroix Road matter. Well, it can be easily inserted under 11.3 as other talking points, Mr. Mayor. Well, that's fine then. Anything else? All those in favor then? Carrie, thank you. Let's go on to disclosures of peculiar interests. None? Thank you. No closed-meeting reports? Fine. Announcements? Does anyone have any announcements, Councilor Grimaud? Quickly, Mr. Mayor, we had a food collection drive that was... that was underway and recorded a lot of... and had us collect a lot of things. Hop-on in Saint-Pascal, the Club Jouet is also raising funds to purchase gifts. They're into this kind of activity for this coming Saturday as they have last Saturday. Any other announcements? Fine. Last Thursday, we hosted the first hockey game in between the Clarence Rockland firefighters and the town employees here at the Clarence Creek Arena. And three of my colleagues, sitting at this council table, took part in the game. Mr. Zant was our trainer, Mr. Grimaud and Mr. Cardrelli accompanied me on defense. So I guess you guys lost, did you? Well, maybe, Mr. Grimaud, a few... there were a few mistakes on defense, but still. It was a clear victory for the employees, 3 to 2. It was a close-knit match. It was a very close match. So we'll get together again on the 1st of January and repeat the experience. I think you had some star players of the firefighters' team missing because they were off fighting a fire or something. So thank you. Anything else? Let's go on now to question period. If anyone has any questions with regard to any of the items appearing on tonight's agenda, give us your name and your address, and we'll give you a few minutes. My name is Renauld de la Bonté, and I'm here to talk with regard to my daughter's subject. I have all of the agenda here, but could we have items such as Alfred and Plante Genet? Well, it's on the agenda, Mr. de la Bonté. The agenda is on the Internet. I would like to have accounts payable and accounts receivable. No, no. Look, this is public information that you can have. It's public on Internet, but it's not everyone that has access to Internet. Listen to me. Before we hold this meeting, we have to approve it. That's why it has to be approved by council at a meeting before it's posted. I know, but in the report, when I'm given the report, I receive the figures concerning last month's meeting. But when I get to the question period, if I ask a question during the question period, I want to know if what I asked was properly written, and it's not properly written. Well, look, well, Guy, come on. What do you have to hide, Mayor? We have nothing to hide. It's all posted on the Internet. Guy, not everyone has the Internet. Not everyone learns how to navigate through the Internet. You have this report. It's not hard to get extra copies, you know? The taxpayers paid for the copy machine. You haven't paid anything, Mr. de la Bonté. Your daughter paid for it. Well, I paid tax for quite a long time here before I gave my house to my daughter. Well, we'll look into that. We'll give you an answer. I'll give you an answer to that. Also, I'd like to have a report of the ditch when they installed the culvert, all of the expenditures. This is none of the agenda here tonight, so we won't go there. I mentioned that any points raised has to deal with the agenda. When you say that you're alluding to the agenda, you say that no taxpayer can come up and ask questions? Look, we've lost a lot of time. I went to Town Hall, and I've lost a lot of time trying to address town employees. You had us lose our time when we fixed an appointment to meet with you, but you never showed up. I'm sorry, Guy. I showed up at all meetings except the one involving you and your engineer, and I asked you to give me a plan. There was never a plan that was drawn up for the ditch. Why would I meet with your engineer to show him how to draw up a plan? Come on now. Yes, that's it. That's it. Well, this is what he said, you know? He hired... His department hired a whole bunch of professionals to dig the ditch. There are no mistakes on the ditch. I told you that this item is not on the agenda. We're not discussing about this. Well, look, I'm the one talking. You're not. Look, look, listen to me. I'd like to have all of the minutes, all of the copies of the agenda right on hand, in hand. You told me that the environmental meeting was to be held on the 15th. I showed up, and it had been canceled. Mr. Simard phoned me up to tell me that it was postponed to the 19th. Thank you. He phoned me. Somebody phoned you? Yeah, for once. Somebody phoned me to tell me that, you know, you have a small button on your copy machine there, and I'd like to have a copy of what's pertinent. I'd like a copy of all expenditures. You have nothing to hide from the public, do you? Not at all. Well, fine. I'm just asking you to give me a copy then. That's all. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Simard, for advising me, by the way. All right. No other questions? Let's go on then. Members' item? There's a members' item promoted by myself and seconded by Councilor Simard concerning single-use water bottles. That's a members' resolution, Councilor Simard. Yes. Whereas... Oops. I'm sorry. Whereas, the single-use plastic water bottles destroy an environment, and whereas council prohibits the use of single-use water bottles where drinking water is handily available, and be resolved after consultation environmental experts, that council be deemed advisable to come up with a program to install a water-bottle dispenser or a water dispenser based on a bottle system, be it moved that we do so? Fine. Seconded? Fine. Consent items? Are there any items that you'd like to take out of the regular order? Yes, 10.1. Mr. Lavaille, it be resolved, Mr. Mayor, that the following items, as identified under consent items appearing on the agenda of the regular meeting of the 2nd of December, be adopted. Item 10.1, adoption of the minutes of the following meetings. Regular meeting, November 18, 2019, and minutes of the Committee of the Whole, November 18, 2019. Item 10.2, receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the Public Library Board, July 9, 2019. Minutes of the Library Board meeting of the September 17 at 2019. And of the Public Library Board meeting, October 8, 2019. Item 10.3, the following recommendations from the Committee of the Whole of November 18, 2019. Resolution to approve the consultant services to manage Snow Dump Facility project. Item B, resolution to reimburse building permit fees to Mrs. Joanne Butler. Item 10.5, resolution to hire a full-time certified educator for daycares. Also, item 10.6, resolution to hire a full-time certified educator for daycares. 10.7, resolution to approve additional funding for the construction of wastewater treatment plant upgrades. And 10.8, resolution to distribute the United Cities and Prescott Russell grant to the community activities. Seconded by Councilor La Lande. All those in favor? Fine. Councilor La Lande, item 10.4, resolution to authorize the write-off of 11 accounts receivable. Yes? Fine. That's for discussion then. You see, in all of this, we have daycare center charges to take care of, fire department charges to take care of, and inspection-related charges. Those charges were incurred by residents that had never paid their tax bill before. But I'm wondering, in a specific case, let's say, let's talk about everything concerning daycare centers. Are these people... Do these people still send their children to our daycare centers? The same rule applies, Mr. Mayor, to those businesses that have not paid their business licenses, their permits, and fire... and they're victims of a fire, if you wish, are they? And firefighters are called out to fight that fire. We're talking about a business license here. If they haven't paid their business licenses and daycare centers, these are probably people from our community, and it costs the municipality so much to extinguish the fire? Well, you know? Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, that it's fairly clear that if the delinquent payer does not pay his tax bill, then it's clear that we have the power to take the child out of daycare center, out of our daycare center. And also, if for those businesses that have fallen prey to a fire but that have omitted to pay their business permits or their business... yes, any fees with regards to business permits, well, then the cost to fight the fire is added on to their tax bill. And if they are not paying, then this bill is sent off to fire... to collection agencies. But when we talk about firefighting fees or fire inspection fees as well as business licenses, those deal with a private property. It could be that, for example, a tenant might conduct a business on a proprietor's business, but they're required to have a business license, are they not? Well, let's say that all three of us rent a building for Mr. Bouchard. You want to perform a fire inspection of our business. It's not Mr. Bouchard's responsibility. But each business is responsible for its respective fire inspection. I know. But if you need to conduct a business or a fire inspection, you're conducting a business. And if you're not paying one, you can't be given a business license because you're in default of payment. I don't want to touch upon any particular cases. Well, if we close the door on certain businesses, they're gone. They're gone, and will never come back. I understand. Well, I could... This is a question for Chief Wilson. Well, I believe that a collection agency is hired to collect what's due. So that's why we're here tonight, to discuss this. That's why we brought this subject up for further discussions. Well, fine. All those in favor then? Carrie? That's... Well, the resolution had not been read, Mr. Mayor. Well, it was not really a resolution. Oh, it was. Be resolved that council approve 7,234 and 75 cent amount that they be considered as bad debt and unrecoverable. Fine. 11.1, community improvement project area. Yes, Mr. Mayor? Whereas council approved the following members' resolution. Whereas the Rockland family characteristic and wellness center used to be located in the Plaza at 2768 and Laurier. And be resolved to resort to this plan, and be resolved that council accept the request submitted by the owners of the 1075 Laurier Street on this community improvement project, even if the request was submitted after the deadline. Seconded by Councilor Simard? Yes. All those in favor? Fine then. Thank you. 11.2 then. Request for additional funds on the Lacroix Road culvert. Be resolved that council approves that 60,000 be taken from the federal gas tax to complete the Lacroix Road culvert replacement project. Seconded? Yes, I second that motion, Mr. Mayor? Yes? Any questions then? Fine. Any questions? No questions? No questions, Mr. Lavaille? No, I have no questions. All those in favor then? Carrie, thank you. Let's go on to bylaws. The consent items? Would anyone care to withdraw any particular bylaws? I would like to have item 12.5 reboot for further discussion, and 12.1 also. Well, be resolved that the following bylaws be adopted. Item 12.2, 2019-107, to authorize the borrowing upon amortizing debentures, 20 years. And 12.3, 2019-108, to authorize the borrowing upon amortization debentures, 15 years. 12.4, to change the street name Maxim Court Chegnier. 12.5, 2019-112, borrowing bylaw for current expenditures, 2020. Seconded by Councilor Zant. Thank you. 12.1, Mr. La Lande. Would you like to please read the bylaw? Yes, 2019-85, to adopt the development charges? It's right down at the bottom? Yes? I'm sorry. I'm just trying to situate myself in the... Well, whereas the city of Clarence and Rockland will experience growth through development and redevelopment, and that it has to revamp its bylaw. And whereas a public meeting has been held to revamp the bylaw, and where have the comments received during the public meeting have been received. And whereas staff have incorporated modifications to the bylaw in keeping with examination performed by staff, be it resolved that council adopt a bylaw 2019-85 concerning development charges, and be it resolved that council confirms that changes brought to the draft of the bylaw that was presented at the public meeting on the 28th of October, 2019, be deemed minor changes, and that as a result, it not be deemed necessary to hold another public meeting before the formally adopting development charges and its relevant bylaw. Seconded by Councilor Grimaud? Go ahead then. Well, I'm wondering if... Well, my first comment is this. And I've seen this not only with this item, but with other items as well that tend to last a few meetings. Is that we never get a full picture of what we're actually going on at the last vote. Like, in this case, we have bits and pieces of past meetings. Like, we don't even have a list of projects on this particular motion. And so it's very hard for any member of the public who views our agendas. And we've had a comment to that effect tonight. It's hard for them to get a clean picture of what we're actually voting on. Oh, here we go, on the last motion at the regular council. Well, we've had public meetings and everything else, Mr. La Lande. Everything's been itemized. I know. But your finally resolution should incorporate everything that's deemed as being filed. Your project list, all of the items. As things stand right now, we have a mix of bylaw that deals with what is deemed as soft and hard services and with both series of figures that are not properly explained in the report. I asked the question this morning to Mr. Noye, and he answered me quite clearly, cogently. But these are things that I've noticed in other reports also, Mr. Mayor, that we only receive snippets or parts of those reports. I think it's important to have the final version of everything that we're called upon to vote. We're called upon to vote on, really. I understand. Now, there was no change. Had there been a change in the bylaw? The motion had not been changed even after the next report had been submitted. Well, we updated the background of all bylaws. And, well, look, we had contractors. I asked them on three occasions if they had additional comments. No, I'm not asking this, questioning this at all, Mr. Mayor. It's just the final version of this bylaw that I'm questioning, really. And we're only receiving parts of the bylaw. You wanted to have the final version of the bylaw, even if there are no changes brought about. That's right. Because when we're talking about major projects such as this one, you know, we'll get involved with similar situations with the dump site. Well, for this particular item, we're coming in a bit late to bring in any modifications. But maybe in the future, you know, if we don't... You know, this is a matter of housekeeping more than anything else. Well, you modify those bylaws and insert the bylaw, the modified bylaw into the minutes, then. Fine. One last thing also, Mr. Mayor. We haven't... There are two projects that we haven't touched upon, really, because they haven't impacted development charges as things now stand. But maybe in five or 10 years. Item number four, everything that it entails, and the training center. We haven't talked about those. And those two items should be withdrawn completely from the list. When we took a look at the budget, we took... And I believe that Councilor Bouchard made the comment concerning the fire practices conducted in Bourget. And we were told, "Come back to us when you have a business case with contracts, signed contracts attached to that." Yes, but there's no... Not one red cent going into the fire station at this point in time, not right now. Well, if development charges come back for further discussion at the next council, let's not forget as to who is going to make up the next council. It could be nine different individuals that sit around this table at the next election. Well, when I got hired in 2014, and I noticed that there are things that are there and that have been looked in by others. You have... You don't have a tendency to question those because you can... You say to yourself, "Well, it's been bonded upon. It's been voted upon." Well, look, if we're talking about Fire Hall Number Four, this is something that the next council will look into. As things stand right now, with the money that we spent on it, we've covered everything. We leave the decision up to the next council to take a look and to determine whether or not the expansion of the city of Clarence and Rockland, the urban sprawl, if we call it, will justify such expenditures with regard to... Well, concerning Fire Station Number Four. Well, we're talking about apples and oranges here. I know, I know. But still, you're going to need a lot of details on tap before you take a final decision. There's not one red development charge scent that's going to go towards a... Well, in order for everybody to get clarification on it, why are such things included in development charges and not necessarily part of the phase where we actually have to? Wasn't that included in the Fire Master Plan? Yes, that section four was included in the Fire Master Plan. It's to give notice to council that this could potentially be required. Certainly, the Fire Service Master Plan was identified that the fire station was required there. And many years ago, it was mentioned that a fire station was mandated council at any point in time can bring back a station location feasibility study. But factors change in municipalities. And what happens with that is what we've seen tonight. So it was there, and it has been there, you see? And part of the study is to look as to the structures that are required and to prepare for that contingency in the future. How long ago, again? I'm not specifics for "again," but was it the last round? When was it introduced? Do you know? And I apologize if this is a specific question. Well, the Fire Master Plan was adopted at the last council, right? Well, it was identified, as you mentioned, nine years ago by previous council where we potentially needed it. Yes, additionally, in the 2015 study, we have to go back to that then. Any other questions then? So I need someone to second this motion? All those in favor? All those in favor? Yes? Great. Everyone with me here? All right. All right, folks. Let's go on then. Item 12.5, Mr. Bouchard. 12.5, 2019-111, to amend the agreement with CIHA. Seconded by Councilor La Lande. Go ahead, Mr. Bouchard. Well, a question concerning the operation maintenance agreement, page 12. The second one, yes? Item or point 29, if you wish. The city shall be entitled to find a sponsor for the naming rights city facilities under such concessions that is acceptable by the city. And after that, it says, "Any signage will shall be of no cost to the city, and the net revenue of the signage shall be shared equally on a 50-50 annual basis." Well, that's a bit my question as to this. Now, this arena, we want to obtain... We want to obtain a sponsor with regard to naming rights. And I just need clarification as to the profits of the naming rights to the building. Is that split 50-50 with the CIHA? If... I don't understand the gist of the agreement. Well, the profits stemming from naming rights, if there are profits, yes. That part would be a 50-50 split. We haven't changed that. I would be in disagreement with that. I believe this is our building. CIH is the operator, indeed, of that building. But if it's... If we're dealing with our own building, let's come up with a sponsor for this building. But I'm not... I don't agree that we should share on a 50-50 basis. Well, and then it says, "Well, the revenue received by the city shall be applied against the city's budget for the Clarence Rockland Arena." Fine. So 50% of what we have here, what I do... You see, if we're talking about 100%, well, it's 100% of the revenues, of the income. It might be an incitement, really. Or it could go 100% to the city of Clarence and Rockland. I understand your point. But I do believe, I do believe, however, that we can help each other if in six months the academy and will profit from it also. But I think I'm comfortable with the 50-50 split. I don't know if it's a trend, this is a trend with other arenas like getting the entire center to go that way. Let's not forget that this money is plodded back into the operational budget. I agree. I agree. Well, again, again. I just wanted to pass a comment that the... current operators need to find a different sharing avenue. Because they're helping the operator, operating the building. The money's not going in their pockets, so to speak. And this is money we would not have had before without this. But, you know, we had to have the assent of council to put that into the agreement. You are certainly welcome to make such comments as you're making tonight. Well, the other part also is, is that have we done this in the past? Or is our intention is to send it to tender? To have it promoted out in the area as far as the marketing standpoint? Well, we're asking you advice as to how to find a name that might be unusual. Well, my suggestion, just talking to the city of Ottawa for the Schenkman Arts Center when they were involved in the naming of that one. I was involved in the process that went through that. And part of the agreement usually for naming, it is usually on a ten year contract, max. Other respects, the problems that they've had is doing this, not having a time set with regard to this. I agree. Well, the final agreement does state a timeframe. Mr. Zant, do you have a comment or? Well, we've been dealing with, with, I won't say issues, but differences of opinion on the Clarence Roatland Arena. My personal sense is that we manage something, but we don't put our name all over the eyes. There are names on contracts where managers seem to own it. And we, the owners of the building, don't really seem to have any say in it. For example, I understand that the Junior B, Junior A, whatever, yeah, Junior A, sorry. Junior Bay was Clarence Creek, but Junior A had advertised. Who gets that money? Just the Junior A or does C I E get a cut? The C I E? C I H gets a cut. Well, why does the C I H get a cut for advertising in our building? Perhaps you get, you might, you were getting into a different area, but you understand what I'm saying. It seems a little bit one sided. The city takes on one thing, we have to split fifty fifty. They take on something, they get to keep one hundred percent. I know there are different monetary... What's that? Interests. But however, I do agree, Councilor Bouchard, with Councilor Bouchard, that there are different things that we have to look a little bit different in. I find that this is okay, fifty fifty, but let's try to get a better understanding as to how much money can be generated by the arena and who gets the, to keep what? Well, fine. Well, it's been written already, it's been, we've concluded agreement. Well, if the advertising inside the arena, if they're getting a hundred percent of it, well, we're not talking about the Junior, well, the Junior Air and the C I H, well, the city's not getting anything. If that's part of the written agreement that they have, it's part of the advertising money that's generated through our building. We understand the financial situation of the academy. So I understand if we say, "Well, okay, we'll give them that." You're talking about the hockey team. That's right, Mr. Mayor. But it also helps out the committee. But it's when we get to the building, the one thing on there. And again, Mr. Mayor, I'm of the same opinion as Mr. Zant. The operators are deemed the managers of the place and I don't see how they end up with fifty fifty percent, fifty fifty of their profits, because it's our building. We're letting them exploit us with advertising inside. Well, I know it's one way of looking at it. So to me, I just think that if you are, you're giving them the naming rights to one of our, our buildings, you should have money in our pockets with regard to that. Well, this was requested by them and we approved it. I'm sorry, I apologize, I did not see it at that time. So I believe that if you wish to modify the agreement, then the onus is yours, but to do so, however, council had requested that this be as so. Well, I'll propose the amendment that we receive a hundred percent. If it's not supported, it's not supported. We also need to look in as, to determine as to who exactly is getting the profits from the advertising in the arena. I believe it's just the Junior A. So before we go forward with any of this, I think that we need further clarification on that as well. All right, so, fine then. I think, well, I mean, I'm okay with deferring if we want to get more information. Well, let's find out if everybody wants to go a hundred percent. If we're not happy with fifty fifty or if we are happy with that, then we'll leave the agreement with that. I believe, Mr. Mayor, the question is this, if you'll allow. We're trying to determine if all of the income stemming from the arena, the C I H, Junior A or the arena, what percentage is distributed out before we take a decision as to should it be split fifty fifty or not? You know, if we can obtain a bit more clarification. Could you obtain us that information prior to the next meeting, Monsieur Boucher? Well, I believe there is a clause, Mr. Mayor, with regard to, well, concerning naming rights. I don't promise that we'll be able to obtain someone or a sponsor. However, that we have, I can tell you that we have a solid agreement. If you, if you tell me to come back and come up with set of figures for the sixteenth, however, I doubt there will be major changes to this. As Mr. Grimald stated, if we take fifty percent, if we go fifty percent, if we go fifty fifty, they're going to, you know, it's a, it's a double edged sword. Instead of keeping, you know, a hundred percent, we offer them fifty fifty, they might work even harder. Well, honestly, with city, the city of Ottawa with the Schenkman Arts Center, they'd gone to tender and they'd solicited many parties. There was some work that had been done involving financial institutions. It stands to reason that we need an employee that's willing to put in time and effort. If we had an economic development plan, this would be, this would be ideal to work on the economic development of that particular area. We don't have anyone allocated to that or allowed to do that. So my perception, well, the audit figures that we received two years ago, would this amount that we're seeking tonight, the advertising revenue amount, be contained in that report two years ago? Well, we're not just talking about that particular amount, we're talking about the amount stemming from Junior A, hockey activities also. Well, I understand. If we're, if the amount involved is twenty thousand dollars, we don't have to split hairs here. Well, nobody wants to split hairs here. You know, we just want to determine, as you stated earlier on, Mr. Lalonde, to have all the details before us before we take a further decision. If we have all of the data, we can defer until the next meeting. And if we have a full range of data, well, my opinion, if the advertising on, concerning the naming rights, we're the full hundred percent recipient, that's fine, that's how I see it. It's our building. Well, if I can add to discussion, I'm currently in agreement with a hundred percent. In keeping with Mrs. Collier's logic, if we are to sponsor a group or individuals that would step into that building and be a major sponsor, let's say, I'm the one that's going to, you know, deploy the effort to obtain those willing to invest in that. Well, if the C I H organization is not in agreement, are we going to break the agreement? Well, I don't even know if that's part and parcel. Why? This is part and parcel of the C I H. Why would the naming rights be included in the agreement that we have with them? If the building is ours, well, we are the owners of this building, but they are the tenants, if you wish. It's as if we are acting as the owner of a building that rents out the facilities of the building to a third party or a second party. Well, the King Edward Complex, did we ask a survey to, for, to everyone that, that uses this building? Well, I believe that maybe a fifty fifty split might compel the academy to obtain a proper sponsor. If they consider that this income should be collected a hundred percent by the city, that's fine and fine. But given the project, the contract that was arrived at in the past, what, Mr. Carter? How much money are we looking at? If this was fifty fifty, we've never ventured to get, you're not going to get a million dollars, I can guarantee you that. Well, we can't get naming rights for the facilities. You know, they have to agree with that particular condition. I don't know, we'd have to find out. If it's beneficial, benefit to both parties to split fifty fifty or meaning where that's fine, but I don't think we'll... If we, if the city collects only a hundred, collects the whole naming rights subsidiaries, then it won't come, it won't press those looking for a sponsor to look very hard. Monsieur Boucher, if we are to remove this clause, could it be a make or break situation? Well, it did exist beforehand. This clause did exist beforehand. But what's important in all agreements is that we've recognized the extent of challenges beforehand. If we start harping on those minor details and if we wind up without any agreement, we'll be meeting much bolder challenges than the one that we're meeting right now. But what's the minimum that we're requesting right now? Let's say that someone wants to put in an agreement for ten years and we split, let's say if we're talking about a thousand dollars, let's split it for half and half. You know, if it's only a thousand dollars, if it's a hundred thousand dollars, well, at present, there is no market study that has been done. I have no idea what value a name affixed on our arena would be worth. We've never been approached to have a name affixed to the arena. And for the past seven years, the arena operates as C I H arena, but it has never paid any amount. We know it's a Clarence Roatland arena, however. If there's a name onto the arena, put on the arena, and we know that there is a name linked to the arena and the income will be linked to the operational budget of the arena. So be it a fifty fifty or a hundred percent amount, it'll still come back to the operational budget of the arena. We can keep things as is. Why don't we try it for one year at a fifty fifty percent? Well, once we signed it, we're going to sign it for a ten year period, you know? We, because, you know, either, let's say if it's a hundred thousand, it could be ten thousand dollars every year, but we have nothing. We have nothing right now. We don't have any, any written agreement concerning this. Well, I have nothing to say. If I'm the owner of that house, if I want to rent out my house and if I want to put a name on my house, I don't see why a tenant would have anything to say about the name I would choose to put, to name my house. And say, "Well, if I put my name there on your house, maybe we can split fifty fifty." Well, you know, if that's that, then I don't need to do anything and it'll give me money. I don't have to have an employee working on a full time basis on this particular project, that's fine. I don't even know why this is part and parcel of the agreement. C I H maybe put that in in a way to generate a bit more income, that's fine. In any event. Mr. Bouchard is not opposed that we go a hundred percent. Monsieur Bouchard has a resolution wish to have it at a hundred percent. Seconded by, for a hundred percent? No, nobody to second it at a hundred percent? So let's revert to the resolution that is before us, to the, for fifty fifty resolution. Mister wanted, Mr. Carterelli wanted figures on advertising revenue? Well, we know, you see, it's difficult to, to have a discussion because half of the data subject to this discussion we should have is contained in, in documents that we don't have before us. Look, we're just stuck on one item more than anything else. Who's in favor of keeping the fifty fifty split? Please raise your hand. Yes? Fine, Carrie then. Carrie, that's fine. We can still request a report concerning this, oh, yes, yes. Confirmatory bylaw for tonight? Be resolved that bylaw two thousand nineteen dash one thirteen be deemed confirmatory bylaw for the regular meeting of town council held on the second of December, two thousand and eighteen. It carried or adopted, seconded by Mr. Carrie Dorelli. Thank you. Adjournment called at seven fifty eight P M. Seven fifty eight on the dot.